...last night, so they did get to see what the questions would be. That's called smart politicking. So good job. All right, for this round, we're going to start nearest to me with Taisha, or the third person to the left for each group, so you know where we're starting this time around. And the first question is, "How do you view the link between transportation and land use? What land use changes should we be making to help meet our transportation goals?" Two minutes for each candidate.
Hello, okay, wonderful. Okay, so, land use. One, the most important thing that I hope to accomplish when I get onto council is helping, working with the city staff who already want this, to create a climate risk assessment, which we currently do not have. That's how I know what I found out! So we have in our site review environmental questions, water use, landscape, but we're not looking at climate risk. We're not prioritizing the risks. We're not thinking about mitigating those risks and then informing land use. So, one is, how do we make sure we're not putting the cart before the horse? The other piece is, again, to what I shared before around being an ecosystems thinker. I'm not just thinking about transportation in isolation ever. I'm thinking always about how does transportation overlap with housing, overlap with workforce? If we are not making those decisions as a collective, if we're not having conversations collectively, we can't continue to have siloed conversations. All right, this one's on transportation. This one's on housing over here. We have to have integrated conversations because this is an integrated challenge, and we need integrated possibilities to respond. So, again, I want to continue to work across the federal, state, and local government, as well as the nonprofit agencies and our business environment, to really think about how we create a comp-- or actually, we have an update, an opportunity to update the 10-year comprehensive plan. Another reason why I am running. Because I believe that, one, when we ask to do something different, they always point back to this plan. So if that's the document, then I want us to be involved in co-creating that document and not leaving any particular issue out somewhere where it will not thrive by itself. No tree lives in isolation. Thank you.
Just repeating the question real fast here. "How do you view the link between transportation and land use? What land use changes should we be making to help our transportation goals?"
So first, Silas believes that we should be repurposing our current roads into more, like bike-friendly roads. Let's go back to the road diet question from the first question. He believes that we should be implementing road diets almost anywhere in Boulder. Basically, road diets are, we're using four car lanes out of three with a designated turn lane, which can add more bike lanes, and there's statistics to support. This can reduce traffic accidents up to 67% from the Federal Transportation Administration. Furthermore, Silas believes we also need to improve our transportation, which includes better biking, walking, and buses. He also believes that we need to focus on unhoused people who need this transportation to support or participate in community, have places to live, enjoy, or participate in community, transportation to work, etc. And this just improves community overall.
So we talk a lot about needing to reduce the in-commuters. The number gets fatted around at somewhere between 30,000 and 50,000 people that commute to work here every day. It's the families of the teacher, the teachers, the nurses, the firefighters. But unfortunately, I think that the luxury townhomes and the studio apartments that we're building all over town are not meeting the needs, either from an affordability standpoint or a suitability standpoint for this demographic. So if we're really serious about trying to cut down this number, we need to understand what they need to move here. About 10 years ago, the city conducted a housing survey of the in-commuters to get that knowledge. I think it's time that we revisit that analysis and use it to build a targeted development roadmap that will ensure we're building the right housing at the right price points, and then, instead of building for building's sake. And then I think we need to make sure that we have very clear metrics for success, so that we're constantly measuring and making sure that the housing we're building is chipping away at that in-commuting total. So I think that would be a big piece of the puzzle to reduce, you know, the impact on our climate as well as getting more folks in here. I think another area is around, is around, just looking at some of the other large swaths of land that we can potentially leverage, like the Area 3 Planning Reserve, potentially the airport property, you know, properties that we can build some really significant affordable housing that would enable us to bring a lot of these in-commuters in and reduce that number further. And then the other is looking at parking minimums on new developments. So we should be building for the future, not the past, and we need to be incentivizing folks to, you know, moving away from cars and exploring a car-like kind of lifestyle. So I think we should be pushing that direction. You know, we do need to focus on equity and make sure that we're not impacting the working families that need their cars to get to work, but we can do this in a way that will really achieve goals. Thanks.
I did not even understand that last question, I'm going to be honest.
Well luckily, you don't have to answer it. Keep passing it. Get that like out of your hand. The popularity contest is plummeting right now. All right, second question. This one will start with Tina. And the question is, "How do you feel about e-bikes on open space, shared-use paths, and on OSMP cycling trails? Would you support or oppose on either or both?"
Okay, thank you for that question on e-bikes. So I'm hearing a lot of feedback in the community in general about e-bikes. And there are a lot of stories that are being shared about the speed with which people are using e-bikes in the community. This particularly applies to teenagers who are accessing school on e-bikes. And if you live around Boulder, you can see a couple of them on an e-bike just downhill-ing at a pretty fast speed to school. So I think we need to think about, first, on the larger level, how are we going to have some safety around e-bikes so we have expectations on speeds? I think it's really important that we think about, like, if we think about dogs being off-leash, and I'm never going to compare a teenager to a dog, that's not the point, but we do a voice-in-site video and a training thing. It's low-impact, it's not through the DMV, but we may need to really think about what are the behaviors we expect of e-bikes and what are we defining as an e-bike? So I want to start that, is how I would think about that. And I think we need to get a little bit more understanding on how we can have e-bikes be safe in our community before we expand. And in general, these are shared trails. So I want to be really clear, we have our hikers, and I'm a hiker, and I'm a town biker, so those are the two activities I'm in. And making sure that we can co-exist well on trails. The Tasso does alternating days, I think, still. It's been a while since I've not biked. But just trying to think about how that's going to work and how they're going to interface on trails. And I'm, the way I think I would like to look at this is as a pilot, because I think we have some work to do on e-bike behavior within town. And I think we need to build on that and then see if we expand it.
Yeah, I think what Tina said makes sense. First off, I think Waylon's going to give a much better answer than me, and that's what I'm going to try. One of the things Waylon and I have actually been talking about is, seems unrelated, but like regulation and AI. And the reason I think it's actually kind of related is like, we have these technologies that emerge, and we don't often recognize the impact until later. An e-bike is different from a bike, and it requires us being in dialogue around those differences and around the changes, because we are just so quick to being like, yes, let's go for it. There could be unintended consequences, and I think Tina pointed a lot of them out really well. And at the same time, I do think it's worthwhile to discuss and see where we can open that up in a way that works. Because accessibility-wise, it is, for a lot of people, e-bike on trails lets them get out there and enjoy our open space, and we need to prioritize that as well. And so I think, I lean towards yes, let e-bikes run up the pace, but I want to make sure that we're doing it in a way that has minimal negative impact on the environment and other people.
So, my concern with this is the conservation of open space land and the infrastructure management that our open space and mountain parks already have to deal with. They're already behind on maintaining their land, so I worry that it would just create more disruption and more maintenance for them, allowing basic species to come in and continue to create social trails. I am in favor of more fun though, always. Kids should be allowed to have fun, and we should look to designate areas where, you know, you can have like a hybrid dirt track, e-bike area in a park. And I think that'd provide an opportunity where it's safe and controlled, and while we still have safe trails for people to hike on and where they're not pushed off a trail or scared of someone running them down. The idea of e-bike education is a great idea. Possibly some sort of training, not a license, but just an understanding of your responsibility on a bike, on a motorized vehicle. I believe the charter does not allow motorized vehicles on our open space trails, so we have to be careful on how we're pushing forward, and we need to respect the charter and the guidelines that have set Boulder to be in the standard where we're at. I think that people should be allowed to rip their e-bike around if it's in a safe lane that's, you know, not designated with other bikes or walk, pedestrians. Excuse me, I'm bored. But we need to just create more guidelines and safety for e-bikes so that people are allowed to express their desire to go fast in a safe way.
Cool. Well, if you're not bored of the answers to this question by now, I'll try to not be bored. So, yeah, I mean, this to me is just common sense. I rode an e-bike here. E-bikes are much heavier, they're much faster. Then there's bikes that aren't pedal assist, where people are cruising around with two people. We get into like a little bit of Clint Eastwood, like get-off-my-lawn mentality about fun, as you termed it. So yeah, we need to make sure people aren't getting bashed in by heavy, fast e-bikes. You know, if I get hit by a normal bike, we're probably in a bad mood about it, but we're probably okay, hopefully. If I get hit by an e-bike going 30 miles an hour or whatever, 25, we're not going to be so okay. So, common sense, but it is also a disability access issue. And, you know, like Jacques, and I think everyone has said at this point, we need to find trails where that's appropriate, where that's safe. I can say right now, I'm not a huge fan of a lot of the e-biking I see on the bike paths. They're burning behind me, they're running on top of me. And, you know, we needed speed limits, and we need enforcement of those speed limits. But we also don't want to start a whole new, like, you know, police program, culture war. So I just hope we can balance some of this stuff, listen to each other, try to reduce, you know, e-bike fatalities, that's one of my goals. That's my first priority, no more e-bike murders. And just make sure it's safe and accessible for all of us. You know, I'm joking a lot because maybe these forums are endless, and we've been in 8,000 of them. But, you know, this stuff does matter, and I'm really not trying to minimize it. No one here wants to get hit by an e-bike or wants to hit someone else when they're riding an e-bike irresponsibly or unsafely. And we've all seen that behavior. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. The next question's going to start with Tara. I'm going to read this question, and since we can sort of answer it with a hand raise, just so everyone in the crowd knows where you stand, I'm going to ask you to raise your hand, yes or no, before Tara and the other three candidates get to expand on their answers. This is one that I think people just want to know about, so. "Do you support or oppose the Safe Zones for Kids initiative, which would prioritize keeping areas around schools and along our multi-use paths and underpasses free of encampments? Please state your reasoning." Obviously, not all of you will be stating your reasoning. Do you support? Yes or no, you can raise your hand. Yes. Do you oppose? Okay, thank you, everybody. And Tara, take it away with your reasoning.
Well, first of all, I'm a fan of ballot measures. Guess what? People get aggravated at city councils, you know that? And so they have an opportunity with ballot measures, if they're aggravated and not happy, to, as a community, say, okay, well, I don't like that answer, so I'm going to start my own ballot measure. So for that reason, I've always supported them. And the parents have not been excited, because there have definitely been issues in Boulder High School. I am, like, you know, I'm an e-bike rider, so I ride up and down, right in that area. What is that, where do I go? The Arboretum, that's right, the Arboretum. Besides that curve, which I always write on, you know that curve I'm talking about? I don't love that curve. But also, there's been a fair amount of encampments there as well, right by the school. So the biggest problem is we have a lot of issues in Boulder. We have a huge mental health crisis right now, you know that. We also have a huge substance abuse crisis. And we, a lot of that is taking place downtown. I do not blame people who are having a mental health breakdown when they have one in a bike, in a bike underpass, or even on a bike, multi-use path, because it's like, not that they're doing it on purpose, just to be clear. So we have to have upstream solutions for them. We have to make solutions for people, especially that are on Medicaid and have nowhere to go. So we have that problem right now, and to say that there are easy solutions is not true. But I will say that Sam's team has a prioritization list, and, okay, I could do it in 30 seconds. They have a prioritization list, and one of the top priorities is having the bike underpasses be clear from tents, encampments, people. Because when we're zooming through those bike underpasses, they should be for transportation. And, you're welcome, we have done that in the past two years. Things have gotten a little bit better. But we really should have transportation, and bike underpasses are one of the highest prioritized. Also, I think schools should be prioritized as well. And Safe Zones is really a prioritization, like, because there's points. And I think that schools should get a lot of points for having safety, so that's. That was a little lame in the applause there, but okay. Okay, timer's started now, okay. So I am pretty bummed that this particular topic has become so controversial and so polarizing. Is it a perfect ballot measure? No, but legislation's really perfect. So let me read you exactly how the ordinance is going to change. This is all that's going to change. It's going to say, prohibited items located on city property within a radius of 500 feet from any point on school property line or within 50 feet on both sides of any multi-use path or sidewalk are subject to prioritized removal. Signage or the notification methods may be used to identify the factors. This is what everybody's fighting for, okay? The sole purpose of Safe Zones for Kids is to ask the city to score the areas around schools and pathways to the schools at the highest level so that when the utilities department is doing the work of removing the needles that propane takes, it goes to these locations first. And please, let me say, this is not a willy-nilly ballot measure that was just brought up in the last couple of months. This is years of parents going to BVSD board meetings, going to city council meetings, working with city staff, trying to figure out a way to protect the kids. This is born from kids who were, have been harassed, attacked, touched. Proposition, I mean, our chief of police just told us that human trafficking is on the rise here in Boulder. No change has been enacted from what parents have done. They were told to basically tell your kids to protect themselves, figure out a way for your kids to protect themselves, and that's where this ballot measure was born from. We've been talking about cyclists protecting cyclists all my life. That's what we've been doing. If they came, if the city came to this group tonight and said, hey, we're going to give you IRIs, we're going to give you two lanes of IRIs to protect cyclists, what'd you say? No, no, I'm sorry, but it's not enough. We need to reduce BMTs by 50%, and then we'll take the protections. No, you would protect the cyclists that you can protect, because cyclists deserve to be protected, and so do our kids. And so I'm upset that this is a controversial issue, and I think our kids' safety should come first. At the end of the day, this has nothing else to do, we're not trying to solve homelessness, we are trying to protect our children after years of working on it. Thank you.
Okay, so the constellation of homelessness, housing poverty, untreated mental illness, and addiction is probably the biggest issue that this community faces, that this region faces, and that a lot of communities and regions around the country face. This is on all of us as council members and as community to resolve. I am grateful for so much energy that is going into solutions, ideas for solutions to this. And I'm grateful that we have certain community members that are putting forward ideas. A couple of things I'd like to share in my perspective. First of all, I'm going to try and quote, "What we do in the next two or three years will determine our future." Some of you have heard this. This is from the IPCC, Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change Chief in 2007. "I've been working on this issue for 16, 17 years, and I've been hearing over and over incremental solutions without getting at the meat of the problem. As a policy professional, I have become impatient with marginal change, and I'm interested in big solutions." Now I'm going to put on my parent hat. I said I have a kindergarten and a second-grade girl. We take our bike down Goose Creek, Foothill Path, Boulder Creek, and Stunk Creek every day, every week of the year, done for the last two to three years. We see homeless encampments, my kids know all about, know the story. A few weeks, you know, and they get scattered every week and move around and move back. A few weeks ago, there was an incident at our school where there was, somebody had to be removed. Fortunately, there was a procedure in place, and it was fine, and it was managed. I can see I'm completely out of time for this, but I'd just like to say that as a parent, I'm interested in strategic solutions that include making sure that people have places to go, that we're dealing with the mental health and the drug addiction issues for people that are experiencing homelessness and who are not, and that we're dealing with the prevention issue, given that half the people experiencing homelessness are experiencing homelessness for the first time. And this is a dynamic process of people losing their housing today. We need to make sure the police chief has what the police chief needs while increasing the use of non-police resources to deal with this problem. And we need a couple of bikes that are non-policed with the care program coming up and down and making sure that the streets pass our safer cyclists as we go. Thanks.
Thank you, everybody. I realize that is a nuanced topic, and you probably need and deserve a lot more than just the hand raise for that. So I would urge, if you have questions for any of the candidates, look at their websites, see their positions, see their full, you know, detailed positions on this, and come talk to them afterwards if you really have a question, because that is a huge topic, that is a huge ballot measure, and a hand raise isn't enough, and I know that for sure. So please talk to them. What we're going to do last here is a few questions from the audience. And I believe, Jenny hasn't started yet, so we're going to start with Jenny. And then we're going to go all the way to the left. We're going to do one minute for these answers, so we can try to get through a few audience questions. And please just pass to the left, and then all the way back to the right, and then to the left again. First one, actually, this was an interesting one that came up last night. How many people in the audience have had a collision with a vehicle while on a bike? Raise your hands, please. With a vehicle? Not an e-bike. Okay, but to your point, how about with an e-bike? Good to know. Okay, an auto, fair. What about the candidates? How many candidates have had a collision with an auto while on a bike? Okay? That just came up last night, and it's kind of interesting to see. That is very prevalent, so. First, really, really fast question. About how many hours a week do you bike? And this should be about a two-word answer, starting with Jen.
I would say that my per-week bike, I don't commute, I ride for pleasure, and Aaron's? Five hours a week?
It's nine out of 10 trips, it says hour two a day, so I don't know, whatever, seven, 10 hours a week. And then you might mount bike too, but sometimes. Yeah, for commuting, and then I mount bike and road bike, sometimes.
Yep, about seven to ten, seven to 10 hours a week. Ditto.
I work from home too, so it's just Aaron's. I probably do three or four a week. I don't know, haven't really calculated five to 10, depending on the season.
Sorry, it's like three to four. I don't commute for work, I work from home. So just going and around, I go to my buddy's house. I use the bus a lot, too.
I haven't left my house in years. But no, I bike every day. I don't have another mode of transportation. I'd say similar to Ryan, seven, 10, whatever.
I don't commute, and I live really close to downtown, so I usually walk or take the bus. I sometimes take my town bike about once a week, so I'm going to go super low, because it's so close, like three minutes.
Five or 10. Thank you, everybody. Next question, we will start with Ryan. And this is straight from the audience. One minute per candidate, everyone's going to answer, so try to get through it. Maybe not take your full minute if you can. "Would you support citizen enforcement of idling, blocking bike lanes, or failure to clear snow from sidewalks? Other cities have allowed this with photo or video proof of violations where the citizen enforcer receives a percentage of the fine. Is this a good idea for Boulder?"
Yeah, I think this is, I think this is great. I mean, there's equity issues we have to think about. Start the timer. Okay, in principle, yes. I mean, this is, this is along the lines of treating bicycling as a serious form of transportation, as we treat cars. We should do the same for transit. We should also do this, consider bus lanes as well. I think it's a good idea. There's equity issues. If we started thinking about automatic enforcement and people with incentives. But in general, absolutely, we should, we should treat our opportunity to make that half of the cars that are out there, that are only going a few miles or less, we should treat the alternatives that we have, will make our lives all better, as co-equal in terms of importance as we do with cars. Thank you, go on, but I'll stop.
Question again, "Would you support citizen enforcement of idling, blocking bike lanes, or failure to clear snow from sidewalks? Other cities have allowed this with photo or video proof of violations where the citizen enforcer receives a percentage of the fine. Is this a good idea for Boulder?"
Can I just, I have like 20 seconds left, but I think I need a big preamble. Like, in general, it seems like a good idea for the reasons I said. I'd love to explore it. It seems interesting.
One time, I was at the East Boulder Rec Center, and there was a bus idling, and I got so angry that I took pictures and called RTD, and got nowhere. But either way, I was that mad. So when you say citizen enforcement, do you mean that we can arrest people or just take pictures? So we give the fines, the police, I don't even understand. Well, I like citizen involvement. What's that? I would have to pay the fine?
No, you get part of the fine back to you.
Oh, I don't want to make money, I don't think we should make money from that, I'm going to be honest. But I do think citizen involvement in this type of thing is a good thing, and I agree with Ryan that I would definitely want to look into it. But I am nervous about equity, and I could definitely see it going awry, if you know what I mean. So could all of us, so there's that.
I don't know if Silas has answered this question, but I'll send it to him and have him answer it and get back to you guys.
So we have Inquire Boulder, which is a tool that people, citizens, can report conditions that are problematic for whatever reason. So I feel like that's a good tool. I'm not a really big fan of having a vigilante kind of approach here. I think it creates a really kind of toxic environment with your neighbors, and I would really prefer that we have a happy community. So I would encourage folks to use the Inquire tool, and maybe we can make that easier so that, and set up more categories to capture the things that we want to capture. But I do not, I do not support citizen enforcement, no. but I do not, I do not support citizen enforcement, no. Thank you, Terry. Some hard truths. One. Colorado had the second highest Klan membership in the country once upon a time. Don't have any illusions about the city of Boulder. Believe. Based on the video that we saw of a police officer who has been trained, who harassed somebody who was doing their job at their residence, which is why we have a Boulder Police Oversight Panel. So absolutely no do I trust people who are untrained, not accountable to anybody, to give me any ticket or anybody else. And I am very concerned that there would be any consideration for some of that, knowing both the historic and current discrimination that is happening. That's one. Two. Equity is not code for racism or discrimination. I am an equity specialist with the American Institute for Research previously. Equity is representation, meaningful participation, access, and quality. It is not code for anything else. Thank you.
Ryan, listen to me, Ryan and I wanna change our answer. Ryan and I are changing our answer. We agree with Taysha.
Powerful stuff. I do agree as well. Although, yeah, I think we should enforce an idling ban. I know idling is illegal in a lot of areas. No one wants the extra emissions. No one wants to breathe that in. And for snow removal, we need to, you know, have our city ensure that, you know, we're doing all that we can to have our bike paths clear. Even in my neighborhood, they don't plow my street, you know, we're one of the side streets that just gets forgotten. So I can't imagine that every single bike path is getting the attention that it needs. So that's really where we need to focus this and make sure that we're safe in the wintertime and the options of alternate transportation are still present to our citizens who dare to bundle up. Yeah, and we shouldn't have this mini Batman going around and telling people they can't do what they do, you know, but we need to have safe solutions. Like, I had to swerve into the car lane today because a bus was blocking the bike path. So there are issues and we need to work to find proper solutions that are equitable for everybody. Thank you.
Yeah, so we're doing plowing, uh, yeah, that also is an access issue. You can't, if you have a disability, if you're a kid, you can't get through a sidewalk or a bike lane if it's not plowed. Right now in Boulder, we have an unofficial policy of plowing the snow into bike lanes. I would love for that to be looked at. Up in Halifax, which is moderate conservative, where my mom lives, they have these little snow plows that also plow the sidewalks. They're busy all day, every snow day. I'd like to see those happen. Why is moderate conservative Halifax ahead of us in protected bike lanes? You know, we know snow here. On idling, I actually disagree in some ways. I think climate crisis hits the most vulnerable first. I've actually read and studied on this a bit. Idling is super bad for us. It's thirty cigarettes a minute equivalent. If you're at a lunch place and someone's idling in front of you, visualize thirty people smoking a cigarette in one minute, which is pretty fast. So in New York State, I'll pull a Ryan here and talk for another minute. In New York State, there's like crews of old timers. They're not Batmans, they're like senior citizens. They go around with cameras and they literally pretend they're on the phone with their granddaughter.
Wipe it up, Waylon.
What they have to do is they have to video the truck for a full minute. They send it in and it actually pays for them to make a living.
Yeah, there's a lot has been said on this. I do, just having been on Nextdoor a little bit, the thought of taking that and raising it to sort of enforce it seems crazy. So, yes, we need to address the issues and the question, and we need to do it in a way, though, that doesn't further divide and polarize our community. Again, I believe sincerely that we all want people biking in safe places. I think we can all come together, and I don't think pointing fingers at each other is gonna get us anywhere near where we need to be.
So, obviously, we want clear streets. We don't want ice and sidewalk and all that. But what if instead of doing it where we have this system where you report it and then your neighbor gets fined? What if we encouraged people to talk to their neighbor and maybe encourage them to help out and do some shoveling and actually emphasize community? Maybe that would work a little better.
I'll agree with Erin on that one. I will say that, I mean, things like idling, I feel like should be offenses like seatbelts, you know? Totally too much information, but I was watching Murder She Wrote last night and I noticed that nobody in the shows were wearing seatbelts in the cars. And I was like, gosh, our lives have changed! So if we were to put together some sort of community outreach campaign and said, you know, idling is ticketable, I think people would turn off their cars. And I don't think that it's that big of a deal to turn off your car when you're waiting for somebody. So I would definitely say that we should make that not vigilante justice, but a regular ticket, like a seatbelt. And the other thing about plowing is I see that all the time, like, people should clear off their sidewalks. I'm next door, I'll give you, I've, I've, I have two Girl Scout troops, twenty-eight girls are always looking for projects. If you see sidewalks and driveways need to be cleared, call your local Girl Scout troops, call your local Boy Scout troops. Everybody's looking for community projects, and they would love to do it. So there are ways to help people who cannot help themselves, so please do that.
And we have time for one more audience question this evening. We'll go through everybody again. One-minute answers, please. And we'll start with Tara.
I have a quick question for you. Are we gonna get to do our final one-minute?
You don't get any final one-minute thing.
Is this the final?
This is the last question.
They have time for a final.
Yes. Would you like to stay an extra ten minutes to have an extra minute each to talk? Doesn't look like it. The question is, and keep in mind that an audience member asked this, a voter, so maybe you wanna answer it. Where did you last ride in Boulder? What was the safest part of the road and the most dangerous?
The last ride that I took, ride that I took was up Boulder Canyon, because now it's allowed. Woo-hoo! And I felt safe, so I'm gonna switch to my ending now. And I'm gonna say that, I'm gonna give you my phone number, because that's what I always do, but for real, you all can repeat after me, now you all got my phone number on this team. Six oh nine, seven oh seven, eight three eight five. And here's why. Just a few minutes after we spoke, two community members came up and gave me some great ideas for bike safety, and I appreciated it so much that I'm asking you all to give me all your ideas, because you guys are the experts. I, you know, I'm a rider, but I'm not like you guys, right? You know, you have your outfits and all that, I don't have one of those. So I am asking you to please call me and give you, give me your ideas on all the things we talked about tonight, for real.
Okay, so the last place I rode was down Twentieth Street from Baseline to CU Boulder Campus. And it's all pretty safe on the CU Boulder campus. The only really dangerous parts are the pedestrians kind of everywhere. Other than that, it's super safe on the CU Boulder campus. But I'm gonna read off Silas's answer to the last question. He says he's against punitive solutions and protected bike lanes are the best option for not having vehicles parked in bike lanes. But there is nuance to that, and each situation would need to be addressed individually.
I live in Newland, so I am constantly going from there down to Pearl Street and back, like, four times a day. And the one area, it's mostly safe. The one area that I don't like is Ninth Street, right when you crest at Mapleton and you come down the hill, because it turns into a combined car and pedestrian lane or bike lane. And every time you do that, cars don't realize it and they try to kind of get past you. So I think that would be better if we could make that a protected bike lane. I don't think it's feasible, given where it is, and so I probably just need to ride on a different street. But that, generally speaking, it's been safe, that's fine. So I rode here, and my least favorite place to ride is Thirtieth Street, which I'm told this is better? So, um, so there's that. Um, and I, I just would say that, again, I'm also not only thinking about me as a rider, I'm thinking about people with disabilities, I'm thinking about people with children and strollers, I'm thinking about habitat, our wildlife that needs to cross. I don't see wildlife crossings anywhere in our community. I live in South Boulder where bear poop is something I see regularly, as well as deer and all of the other wonderful wildlife that we get to interface with, but we have responsibilities around that. So again, I biked here on Thirtieth. I would like to see protected lanes everywhere if we're expecting people to commute. And a car, a bike is a car. Thank you, baby, for my beautiful e-bike birthday gift. We did not get a rebate. That is as expensive as a used car and should be treated and regulated thusly. And so I also, while I'm here, wanna say a vote for me is a vote for love and following the evidence. Thank you.
What was the question? Oh, yeah, 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 all right, yeah, yeah, thank you. Okay, so, uh, last bike ride was on the way here from about Shanahan Ridge, down here through wonderful, um, Martin Park, and then through around Whelville, and then getting on to Thirtieth, and that was exciting, because I was like, wow, haven't done this yet. Super fun. Was great for a little bit, not so great towards the end. Just how it goes. My daily bike ride is from my house down to Sweet Cow with my girlfriend after dinner. Because when you bike down and up, it kind of like pays it off, right? Super, feel super safe on that all the time. They put it in speed bumps, so I can jump my mountain bike on the speed bumps. It's awesome. It's like a mini park in my neighborhood. I have to bike back. If you liked what I said, please grab a yard sign to have them spread out. I do not wanna carry them back. I'd really appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, my last bike ride was, what, an hour ago? It didn't feel super safe. I bike defensively always, because you can't trust those cars. So I felt relatively safe and in control, but, you know, heading down Seventeenth from University, you're going way too fast getting onto the bike lane comfortably unless you wanna burn your brakes out. So then I went along Arapo and kind of cut across town as I could. Could be a little better. Protected by friends. Try it. I also bike with my yard signs. Please take one. Take one of his, take all, take all of our yard signs, please. You don't have to tell us where you're taking them. And my website is waylonmoose.com. Thank you so much.
So my last bike ride was last week, but it was to downtown, and I can't even try the Ninth Street Hill, Terry. I go down Thirteenth. It's easier for me, I just get out of breath. So, yeah, and again, I've been serving this community and local government. I served for eight years. I also served six years on the board for the Conference of World Affairs at CU, another place I bike to a lot. I care so deeply about this community. I'm passionate about making Boulder a model city for the whole country. And I am dedicated to it, so please check out my website, www.tinaforboulder.com. Thank you.
You all already know part of my last bike ride. I biked from, from my house over to Creek, just above Evan G. Vine. I always bike, usually just like go right past Growing Gardens and then down Thirteenth, which I really enjoy, that path down Thirteenth and then onto the Boulder Creek. And I enjoy biking on the Boulder Creek. And then I biked from there, carrying that fellow from Holland, back down. And I mostly felt safe, except that that was a lot of weight on my bike and I was a little afraid that my back tire was gonna pop, but it didn't, so that's very, very fortunate. And then I biked to Micro Cafe and then, and then up here. And so, yeah, I felt safe, safe and secure on all of that, I feel like. There's enough good bike paths, but there needs to be, to be more. So, yeah, learn more about me. Regeneration Boulder is my community name. I care about regeneration. Regenboulder.org is my, my website. I'd love to talk and hear about what you care about and hear about how we can help advance that in the city. Thank you.
As I mentioned, I live in Dunbar, so my rides are not as intense as some of the ones that hold down here. I am, my last ride was just to Snarls, to get lunch with my kids on Sunday, which is just right up Lookout. I always feel very safe on Lookout. They also just redid Seventy-Sixth, which is a great street. I used to ride. Dunbar Brewing used to be my favorite ride, but they closed that brewery. So my other bi-weekly is to take the Seventy-Sixth Street Trail down to Monarch Fields. My daughter plays softball on those fields in Dywot, so that's a really nice ride. I just wanted to say, I had my Daily Camera interview earlier and I mentioned this, but if they don't print it, which they probably won't, I just wanted to mention that I, when this campaign is over, I will be sad not to see this panel of people every week, every week. There, any one of them would be a great candidate for council. They are thoughtful, intelligent, lovely people. I support every single one of them. I wish I could endorse every single one of them. They all have incredibly amazing specialties, and I'm honored to be running with them. So I'm Jenny Robbins, Jenny for Boulder. Pamphlet's over there. Stop, yard signs back here. Thank you very much.
I am glad for the chance to have been able to deliberate on the last question and learn and maybe stimulate some of the experience. And this is the question I was thinking about more, the question of safety, because I'm outraged every day with what we're continuing to do and the health epidemic and safety epidemic that we're not addressing on our streets. I rode here, I've been riding around all day. The scariest part is probably just Folsom going southbound as we approach Pearl and Canyon and just all intersections and the potholes, and yeah, it's crazy. The number one source of preventable death in our county that local government's control is people being hit by cars on a transportation system that is designed for cars to go fast and to mix with people. This is something we can do something about. It's a chronic problem that we've become somewhat inured to, but we can solve it. We have the power, if we make it a political priority, and call this an emergency health crisis.
Thank you, everybody, as we wrap up this evening. Really, really appreciate all of you coming out. I have been in your seats. Like I said, I'm glad I'm not anymore. And I really appreciate, honestly, every single one of you running. You're adding a lot to the community, whether you win or not, you're part of the conversation, and I trust you above anybody else who hasn't run to make a good decision. So thank you all. I really appreciate you all being here. I appreciate the audience being here. Thank you for being so receptive and so helpful and listening to everybody. It's been a great forum, and hopefully, you know, one month left here. Talk to the candidates, talk their ear off. Now is the best time to get their attention. As soon as they're on council, the email delete button is very easy to press. So get in their faces now. This is when you have the most power over your council candidates, so do your jobs as citizens and hold them accountable. Thank you all. Thank you to Full Cycle for hosting this. And have a good evening, everyone. Feel free to hang out and talk. Thank you so much.
It's a lot easier than answering the question. It was good, I was glad. Thank you, guys. Help from here.
Well, what was your deep worry?
The deep drive.